Thank you for coming out tonight. It's a beautiful day for meetings. It's raining cold, so I appreciate it. Those of you who don't know me, my name is Mike Ritchie and I'm the district administrator here. Margot Smith is going to be taking some of the slides up here. She is our business manager. And the purpose of tonight, just so we don't get confused, when we have a referendum, we do our public presentations. This is not a public presentation just about our district, our referendum. This is more why we have to go to a referendum, to give you some background information, talk about the history of the Northern Pines school district referendums, and what's the difference between a property-rich district like Northern Pines and a heavily aided district where we consider those districts property poor, but we also use the term heavily aided. We're going to explain all of that in this presentation. We are currently in the third year of a three-year referendum, so technically at the end of this year, that money goes away, it sunsets, it's gone. In order to continue with that type of money, we have to pass another referendum. This would be my fourth referendum, and Margot has participated in two referendums here. So why do school districts need to go to an operational referendum? It all started really back in 1993, when the state enclosed revenue limits. And the easiest way to explain revenue limits is, there's a formula we use. Margot's going to go through that formula. We get a number at the end of the formula. That tells us what we can legally levy in taxes to our taxpayers. So we have to stick to that number. We can't exceed that number unless we go to a referendum. Here's the problem. This started back in 1993. The problem is, there's no factor in there for a district that might be geographically very large, like Northern Pines. We have a number of schools, we have 500 square miles. We are in with all the other schools that might have one school building, but enrollment-wise, the same size. And obviously, if you have more sites, you have more expenditures. Equalized aid. Margot's going to talk briefly about equalized aid or general aid.
Well, equalized aid is basically aid that we get from the state of Wisconsin. It's based on our property values for the most part. And you'll see a little bit more of this when we get into the revenue limit worksheet, where it talks about how they try to equalize property throughout the state, so that in theory, whatever area of the state you live in, whether your property values are assessed at 80% of their property value, or 76% of their property value, or 100% of their property value, it equalizes those values to put everyone on a level playing field, basically. So I will talk about that a little more as we get into this.
Okay, I talked to you earlier here about there is a formula that we use before we get into the spreadsheet of the formula. Margot's going to kind of walk you through the four different steps.
Okay. And once you see the revenue limit worksheet, hopefully this will become a little clearer. It is a very sort of wacky spreadsheet. It's very difficult to grasp your first time around. I can tell you that I have to refresh myself every single year when I do this, and every year I learn a little something new that I didn't know the year before. So don't feel bad if I lose you a little bit, because it's not something you can just pick up. They have classes at the state level at board administrators every year, because it is at first glance difficult to understand. So I'm going to do the best I can, and hopefully you'll understand somewhat what I'm talking about. So the first step is you take the previous year's base revenue, and I'm going to show you that on the actual revenue limit worksheet. You divide it by an average of the district's most recent three-year enrollment, excluding the current year. So your revenue limits are based on a three-year rolling average of your full-time equivalents. Then in step two, you take the previous and you add the per pupil allowable increase to the revenue base. Step three, you determine the new three-year membership average, which is the current year and the prior two years' three-year average. Then you take the maximum allowable revenue per member, determined by the first two steps, multiplied by your new three-year membership average. So now I'm going to try to show you a little bit.
When the state's putting the budget together, you always hear this step two, you always hear the different numbers about how much the per pupil amount is going to go up. Is it $75? Is it $150? Is it $250? The proposal of issue was to freeze it for two years, and the original budget came out, that's the money we talked about right there, the per pupil increase.
Okay, so I'm going to try not to take a power, but I'm going to point a little bit and try to explain. If you can see, it's line one section up on the very top of the screen that goes all the way down to the $13,502,202 total. That is called your base revenue. And where that comes from is my last year's revenue limit worksheet. So last year, the information that was on this side of the revenue sheet, certain categories are going to pull over to this side of the revenue limit worksheet. Last year, we got the $92,592 in general aid, we got $8203 in computer aid, we had a font ten levy of $16,405,792, we had a penalty of $7301, and we had a levy for non-recurring exemptions. And those non-recurring exemptions are your whole harmless exemption from the prior year, which is on line 7B, your non-recurring referendum, your declining enrollment exemption. Those are called non-recurring exemptions because they fall off the revenue limit the following year. So then you can see, you come up with a total of $13,502,202. That pulls up over to the top of this screen, and that is called your 14,15 base revenue. And we're going to continue to work down this side. This, you can see, we've got three years, 2012, 13, and 14. These are our full-time equivalents. You take those three numbers, divide them by three, and it plugs up into here. That number in turn pops over to the second line of this worksheet. Then this is your current year rolling average, which is your full-time equivalent. You can see that the $13,19 pops down to here, $12,99 pops down to here, and then this is our current year. Then you come up with a new average, right here. That pops over to, I should be taller than the one up, yeah, right there, the $12,92. That pops up over there. So you can see how you're gradually starting to fill in the right side of the worksheet. Then you go down here to your declining enrollment exemption. And basically, what that is going to be is you're going to take the $13,28 minus the $12,92, come up with $36, times your base revenue per member, which is up on the third line from the top, and come up with a declining enrollment exemption. You only get that if your enrollment is less than it was the prior year, your three-year average. So then that fills in over there. Then you have state aid for non-computers, I'm sorry, non-computers, exempt computers. And basically, where that number comes from is you can see down here, they have an exempt computer property valuation. That number is plugged in by the state formally. So if you take that number times the mil rate, which is our final product over here, that number's actually going to fill in last, you come up with the $73.7. So in this case, you're taking 1.235 million times the mil rate of 5.966, and that's where that number comes from. So you popped over what you need on that side. So to do the current years, now we've got line one filled in our base revenue, we've got our membership average building, we've got our base revenue per member from last year. Now in other years, normally we would get a per pupil increase that would add on to our last year's base revenue of $10,167. This year, there is zero increase. So there's no number filled in on line 4A, which is the yellow fifth block from the top. So our base revenue per member is still, if you would add those two numbers together, is still $10,167.32. Then we take our current membership average, which is the $12,92, multiply times the $10,167.32 to get the $13,502,202. Then you see, we have here a maximum revenue per member, and we have a whole harmless non-recurring exemption. Oh, and I made a mistake. The $10,167.32 times the $12,92 equals the $13,136,177 over here to the left. Then we get what's called a whole harmless non-recurring exemption. And basically, that brings us up, they give you a guarantee that you won't get any less revenue, less than, you won't get less revenue than your base members' revenue the prior year. So you can see how that number came up to $13,136,177. Last year, we got $13,502,202. So they guarantee we won't get less than that. So in order to get that, they add the 365 or 366 onto that to bring us right back up to the same number that's on line one. So now, if we had had increased enrollment, we would not get that amount added on because we have more pupils, multiplied times the $10,167. Does this make any sense?
The idea is not to understand this. The idea is just so you have a base knowledge of what it goes through to come up with the revenue limit that we have. Because that's what drives a referendum, is the revenue limit. So I don't think we have to get into more detail, because it's very complex and complicated. We just wanted to show you what the form looks like. The later you have your annual meeting, the more accurate numbers you have. By law, you have to set the levy by the first of November, so the later, and we just had our annual meeting last month, the later you go, the better. Okay?
Right, yeah. And basically, what you end up is with your tax levies over here.
Okay. Moving on. Types of referendums. There's three types of referendums. There's a referendum to issue debt, there's a referendum to exceed the revenue caps on a recurring basis, and there's a referendum to exceed revenue caps to a non-recurring basis. This is the one that we're talking about. Northern Pines does number three. Number one is really used for new buildings. So when we had the referendum for the high school, the K-8, the elementary schools, that is a referendum to issue debt. So think of construction. Recurring referendum is mainly for operational referendums, like what we're doing. There's a big difference between recurring and non-recurring. Recurring means you have that number every single year, it never goes away. So if you go for, last time I went for a $2.7 million referendum. If we would have gone for a recurring referendum, that $2.7 million stays in your budget forever, never goes away. Okay? What we did, we did a non-recurring referendum. Same definition, except it sunsets. The district sets the number of years. Three years is very common. There's also districts that do five years and six years. We choose to do three years because we can project out three years, we're comfortable with three years. The reason we don't like the recurring referendum, because eventually you'll have to go to a referendum on top of a referendum. Because they're going to say, you told us this will be it, we've got this money, we passed this recurring referendum, but eventually it won't be enough money. Once you go to a referendum cycle for operation, you will continue to do that cycle as long as this formula stays the way it is. So we choose to do non-recurring, we also choose to do three years at a time. A little bit of history with the revenue cap history. Since 1993, there have been 1,059 operational referendums in Wisconsin, 517 have passed, and 542 have failed. Now, the recurring, you can see where 36% passed and 64% failed. That's because that never goes away. People overall don't like the recurring. Non-recurring, you can see 58% passed and 42% failed. A little bit about our history here. So this is nothing new. Back in 1998, Northern Pines went to an operational referendum. But look what they did. They went to a recurring referendum for $950,000, and look how badly it failed. Okay? You see, I just said earlier, eventually you'll have to go to a referendum. If this referendum would have passed, we're still about $2 million short of a balanced budget. So that one failed, they came back. In April of 1999, they stuck to the recurring, they lowered the dollar amount, that one failed again. Now they came back, same dollar amount, but now non-recurring. It still failed, but it was very close. So then, I'm not sure how they balanced their budget these years, there must have been a lot of cuts.
There's a lot of cuts, yes.
So back then, they switched gears here a little bit to April 2002, so they went from '99 to 2002. Now they broke it down. In 2002, they had three questions on the ballot. Question one was for textbooks and maintenance. Question two was for classroom supplies, bringing back co-curricular, which told me back over here, they cut some stuff, more technology. And then question three was for the K-8 roof. And you can break it out this way if you choose to do that, and all three questions passed. So then this obviously helped the budget, because that, back in 1999 to 2002, was a long time ago, without getting money here, here, or here. So that would have been tough to manage a district. Then we go into April 2006. We had a failed referendum. We came back in June for less money. That referendum passed. April 7th to 2009, for three years, $2.9 million had passed. This is when we got to four years after this one, and then we came back February of 2013. And we technically had two questions. This was the main question right here for the $2.7 million, but if you remember the smoke wall at the middle school, that was just a one-question, one-year dollar amount. That was there for one year, and that went away. So you can kind of see the history that we had. As we get going here, I'm going to talk a little bit about why it was a mistake to go four years of the three-year referendum. You'll see in a couple of slides, you'll see why. And then we had issue of debt referendums. This was for the K-8 building back in '92, it passed. And then October of '95, St. Germain Land O' Lakes passed. And then October of '98, this was to renovate the high school. That one failed. They came back in 2004 with the questions for the high school. This is for the main high school, that passed. This is for the fieldhouse, it was a separate question, that passed. And then the pool failed, there is the vote for the pool, and this operational money, you can see recurring. Okay, that meant $300,000 every single year, but not so much for maintenance or operation. That money would have gone towards the pool, to maintain the pool. But it was recurring, so that money would have been in the budget every year. Just demographics of our district. Currently, we're at about 1,312 students, we're 474 square miles. Our equalized valuation is just under $3.2 billion. Mill rates $5.97 per thousand dollars. We get a whole whopping $72,525 in state aid. That's what we get in state aid, I have a $19 million tax leverage. And I'm going to show some slides here, property rich, property poor, and you'll see a big difference. Estimated population of our county, 21,000, 23% is 65 or above, and tourism is our main industry. Back in 2013, $2.7 million for the three years, and you can see the average shortfall for those three years is 2.705, and those were the actual budget shortfalls. So if this referendum would have failed, that is the amount of money we would have been cutting out of our budget for those three years. So as you can see, as we have decreased enrollment, this number is going to get higher with our property values. I'm just going to explain, most of you know what a TIP is, but I just want to break it down in simple terms, because the next couple of slides talk about TIP out. TIP, if a new business comes into town and they want to expand or they want to, usually the community's very happy, well, those districts pay taxes to the school districts, that's why it's really exciting when businesses come into town. But if they have a TIP, they don't pay the school district taxes for a set amount of years. It might be 10 years. They pay taxes, but it goes to the municipality or the city for the infrastructure to get that business up and going. A school district would support a TIP, because eventually they're going to get that tax leverage, and they want the business, it's going to bring families, it's going to bring kids, it's going to bring jobs. So when you hear the word TIP, they're still paying taxes, not to the school, until that TIP expires. Okay. Property-rich school districts. I went online and pulled all the districts between a population of 1,000 and 2,000, and I wanted to compare it to Northern Pines. So when you consider property-rich, look at Northern Pines, all the districts in the state between 1,000 and 2,000, our value is $3.2 billion. Now you look at Wisconsin-Dallas and you see, how can their district only have $2 billion and we have $3.2 billion? Well, I can promise you, Wisconsin-Dallas has a lot of TIPS. Think of the Calhari, think of all those. But eventually, those are going to run out, and that tax money will go to the district. And you guys, Spooner, East Troy, Tomahawk. And so you can see, that's our overall budget compared to their budgets. Tax levy, state aid, mil rates, and then free reduced lunch, and then the size of the district with 474 square miles, and so, okay, focus on this column right here. So this, the equalized aid, even those dollar amounts compared to what you're going to see in the next slide, it's not that much. Okay? But property-rich, lots of value in your property throughout the district. Heavily aided districts. Let's look at Elk Mountain specifically. Their property value is $298 million compared to our $3.2 billion, so a big difference, property-rich, property poor. Their budget's $17 million, what we levy with $19,086 in taxes, their tax levy is only $2,773, because they get $8 million in state aid compared to our $72,000 in state aid. Now, you can go right down the list, and you can look at what they get for state aid, and you can look at what the tax levy is compared to our $19 million. All right? Now, the argument that I've gotten into with some of our legislators, not recently, but when we started talking about this a few years back, is they said, yeah, you don't get state aid, but your levy is so low. And that's true, our levy is low. But I would rather pay $9.28 on $2.7 million compared to $5.92 on $19 million. Do the math. This is a much better deal for the taxpayer, even though the mil rate seems very high, you're only paying it $2 million compared to $19 million. And so, heavily aided, big discrepancy. I'm not going to go through all this. This is more for the after-referendum presentation, because people ask, what have you done? What have you done to lower the cost to the taxpayer? What have you done to make your budget balance? And you can see that we have done things with handbooks, insurance, with Act 10, employees paying 12% of their health insurance, we're paying 12% of dental insurance, half the retirement. And so we've taken a lot from our staff, okay? And there comes to a point, when you take too much away, you start losing teachers. And we're at that point right now, we can't keep taking money away from our staff. Why does it cost more to operate Northern Pines district than other districts? It's all about demographics, and it's about the structure of the district. 474 square miles, 1.3 million in busing alone. There's nothing in the formula that offsets that money. So if we have to compare ourselves to another district with no busing, we spend 1.3 million in busing, they might not spend anything. But it comes out of our revenue limit. It does not come out of their revenue limit, because they don't have busing expenses. They can use that money for curriculum. A district our size would have two or three buildings, not five buildings. If they might have one building, you could see a K-12 in a district that size, or you might see an elementary school, or a K-8 school, and a high school. Here's the comparisons I like to make. I'm going to give you a second just to look at this chart. We're in the middle in the blue. And the one comparison I like to make, and you hear this all the time, is us and Little Shute. Little Shute's tucked away in the Fox Valley next to Carina and Appleton. Same amount of kids, our property's $3.2 billion, their's $456 million, our budget's $25 million, their's $20 million, they levy about $4.5 million in taxes, we levy $19 million in taxes. Look at what they get in state aid, almost $10 million, and we get $92,000. These numbers are from last year. This year, we're getting $72,000. And then the mil rates, free reduced lunch, 474 square miles, this is not a misprint, their district is three square miles. They have no transportation, they have no busing, other than co-curricular and special education. That's it. So the $1.3 million we spend, they don't spend any of that. We spend it in diesel fuel, they can spend it in instruction. So this is the problem that we face every day. And again, would you rather pay $9.95 on $4.5 million for $5.92 on $19 million? And the answer is $9.95 on $4.5 million. You can't, the argument that our mil rate is low is a false argument. Yes, our mil rate is low, but it's not comparing apples to apples. So mil rate history, you can see back in 2005, '06, the mil rate was 5.98, and it's state fairly constant, and the proposed mil rate for this year is 5.97. So look where we are today, look where we're back in 2005, we're actually $10 less. When you look at the levies, they were at 19, and we were a little bit less in 2005, but when you look at 2006, 2007, 2009 was $21 million, so we're not spending more money. And again, that's a false statement. People think we're spending more money. There is the proof right there, we're not. Okay? Now, when I said earlier about that four-year referendum, back in 2009, we went to a referendum, we went from three-year referendum, and we did extend it out to four years, because we built our fund balance up, and we said, well, if we can get by, let's not go to our three-year referendum, let's try to squeeze the budget, take some money out of the fund balance, and give the taxpayers a break. Well, we did. Because this should have been year one of that referendum, yet it was year four. And it wasn't really year four of the three-year referendum, because the three-year referendum goes away. So what happened back in 2011, '12, this was the third year of the referendum, so that $2.7 million that we had expired. That money went away. That's why the levy dropped so much. Actually, it was $2.9 million at the time. That's why that levy dropped. So it's $2.9 million we could not legally put on here unless we went to a referendum, because that referendum money expired right here. So what happened is, taxes went down about 18%, and people were so happy, because their taxes went down a lot of money. It was great, until the next year, when we had to go to a referendum. So what happened was, we went to a referendum, passed it for $2.7 million, and put it back on the levy. So they went from $2.9, they came off the levy, down to $16, they got an 80% decrease in their tax, and now we put $2.7 back on, guess what? Taxes went up about 17 or 18%. So I received no... So, I received no phone calls here, but I can see a lot of phone calls here. And people didn't understand how that worked. And so, when you go from referendum to no referendum to referendum, it makes a big difference. The best thing to do is go from referendum to referendum to referendum with no gap in there, okay? So, we have to be careful. I don't think we're ever going to get to a place where we're going to be able to stretch from three-year to a four-year. Our fund balance was being built up pretty nice. And so, the only way we got to the four-year referendum was because we took money from the fund balance. When the board set the budget that year, the levy, the budget was not balanced. We knew we were going to have a shortfall and we knew we were going to take fund balance to make up the difference that year. Comparing mill rates to other districts, this is our conference and you can see we're by far the lowest in our conference. The reason you don't see Lakeland up there, Lakeland's in our conference, Lakeland's a weird district because it's a 912 high school. They have feeder schools, all those feeder schools are K-8 districts. So, North Lakeland, it's its own school district, only K-8. Lactaflambeau, it's own district, K-8. Arborvita, own district, K-8. MHLT, own district, K-8. They all feed into Lakeland High School, which is a 912 school district. So, all those districts, they have their own school board, their own budget, their own levy, okay? So, Lakeland would be a lot less than this because it's only for high school. It's not K-12. So that's why they're not up there. But you can see we're by far lower. To do this slide, is the 424 school districts in the state. These are the 10 lowest mill rates in the state. And we are tied for seventh with Three Lakes. And that, it's kind of different areas of the state. You roll through Washington, that's Door County. This is over towards Superior. Everyone knows where Mercer is. So you've got us, Three Lakes, Virgins over by Rice Lake, that's Minon over again towards Superior. The highest, these are districts, sorry Dan, the districts you don't want to live in. So, when you look at the districts, $17.05, $16, down to $13. These are the highest mill rate districts in the state. I did not look up their levy, but just the mill rates. Open enrollment plays a key factor. As you can increase your open enrollment, your revenue is going to be positive. If you have more ins and outs, you can make money on the revenue side. If you have more outs than ins, you're going to lose money on the revenue side. So it's very, very important to have the in column higher than the out column. So you can see the last five years, we had that, and then prior to that, we lost money. So hopefully that trend's going to continue where we have more ins than outs.
Question.
Yep.
When you were discussing enrollment, your planning enrollment, what is counted in that enrollment in regards to the ins and the outs? Are the ins accounted? Or are the outs counted because they're in our district but not getting served?
Correct. And that lovely spreadsheet you saw, the open enrollment kids out of our district count for our enrollment because they're our kids that live in our district. The open enrollment kids we have in, they do not count in our enrollment for revenue limit, they count in their home district. So you would think that we could count this year 85 in, we'd hope it could come 85, we can't. We count 68. Those 68 kids leaving our district live in our district. Those are the kids that we count. I wish we could count those kids because it would be more kids in the FTE.
Thank you.
Yep, good question. And Margot's going to talk briefly here about how we calculate the three-year revenue.
Yeah, and I won't give you every detail, it was a lot of pages of numbers, let me tell you. But I can tell you my approach. And my approach is that when I have knowns, those are what I use. For example, if I know that the Wisconsin retirement system rate as of January 2016 is 7%, that's what I use. Obviously, I have to estimate the coming years. I have to look at trends and I have to estimate. If I have contracts for, let's say, our copiers, for our facilities, different things like that, that's what I use. In most cases, I rely on a three-year prior history plus the current year budget and then project three years forward. And for almost every single line in my projections, I do have a formula that I apply. I also have to look for something that might skew the amount. For example, if I'm looking at Dave Bowman's budget for facilities and I know that in 2012, '13, we had a $725,000 group in that number, I have to take that into account and adjust for that. So it's very important that you look at the history and be aware of things that will skew the math. So, I try to look at a big picture. I use averages where I talked to Dr. Ritchie about possible wage increases, things like that. We decide on an assumption. I list those assumptions for the board so that they know what those assumptions were. I try to take what's called the middle-of-the-road approach where basically, I might show the same number for three years, for the three upcoming years, but I'm basing that on averages with a possible increase or if there is justification, a possible decrease. And this gets very tricky, as you know, I don't have a crystal ball. And so I'm giving my best estimate as far as gas prices, utilities. We do use a forecast for enrollment projections. I do use those projections to do the revenue limit worksheets using the DPI formula with the information I have at the time that I do the projections. For example, next year, I know that we are getting $250 per pupil in general aid. So that is something I was able to plug into my calculations as far as aid. Grants are a little bit tricky because, for instance, this year is a good year because we don't have charter school grants this year. Last year, we had, what, help me out, about $300,000. We had two at about $150,000 apiece. Now, I know that we do not have those for this year. Will we get them in the coming years? Maybe, maybe not. That's why I have to use a middle-of-the-year approach, use averages plus the current, and then project out a reasonable increase or decrease and use that number. So, we do have contracts, some of the big numbers are pupil transportation, we are under contract with a busing company, so those sort of things I know. But basically, that's how it's done. And I go through line by line, every curriculum area, every revenue area, every grant area, and I project every area according to the DPI classifications and work from there. And then I come up with the three years that if we had no referendum, what would it look like? And then we work from there.
Now, there they are. Just project the shortfall for the next three years. $3.4 million, $4.3, and $4.9. The average shortfall is up $4.2 million per year for three years. There was a slide in here that talked, the last referendum, and that average shortfall for the last referendum was the 2.6, just over 2.7. So that's the difference, the way the funding formula works. And I think a lot of you heard already that Rylander's going to a referendum on February 16 for $5 million per year for three years. So, they're comparable to what we're doing. Now, this sheet, these numbers show, these are what ifs. What if we went to a referendum for $2.9 million per year for three years? There is the year-by-year shortage, but the average shortfall is $1.3 million. So if we passed a referendum for $2.9 million for three years, we had to cut $1.3 million out of the budget per year. And then you can see, as you increase the referendum dollars, you decrease the budget deficit. So the board is going to be discussing, what's the right number to ask for for the referendum? And I think we can all see where we have been in the past is not going to be enough for the future. So that's a discussion that we're going to start having tonight. People ask how we're doing academically. I'm very happy to say we're doing very well academically. One of the things that we measure, how we do power, students are performing, is we have DPI came up with report cards, and they started that in 2011, 2012. And so we have got three years of report cards. 2014, '15 year, they did not do a report card because of the testing debacle they had. And they're going to continue with that, report cards next year, this school year. So there's no report card. Would students like that? No report card for a year. No report cards for the 2014, '15 school year. But when we had three years of report cards, we did very, very well. The first year, they did not do a district score. Then they came up with a district score after the first year. And you can see, both years, we, as a district, exceed expectations. This is not, this is not based on 100 percentage points either, so just so you know that. But we do exceed as a district, we do exceed expectations. Now, how do we compare to CSA 9 schools? There's 22 school districts in CSA 9. They're not all K-12. So I did not count the K-8 districts in here or Lakeland High School in here. So if you look at all the K-12 districts in CSA 12, I'm sorry, CSA 9, we scored back in 2012, '13, Northland Pines scored the highest. Out of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 17 K-12 districts in CSA 9. Pretty good. Last year, 13, 14, we were second behind Marathon City. They did, they finished their district score 1/10 of a point above us. So I think we can say we're even. Let's round it. So again, but we did very well. So academically, it's a lot to be proud of. Programs, you know, these are the things that we can do because of our referendums, because of what we are able to offer to our students. We have a very good system, we've got great programs in place, and I think we can be proud of that fact. It's really important to be able to recruit and retain staff. And if we continue to pass referendums, that's a sign that we're going to be able to recruit and retain a good staff. Our weekly newspaper has been very supportive. And they talk about, three different editorials they did. This one talks about flawed state revenue gaps are the referendum culprit. So they're talking about the funding formula. Okay? This is the year that we lowered the levy. And then they talk about test scores. So, when's the next referendum? February 16, 2016. I already said Rylander's going on that date. Belk had theirs last year, they passed theirs. They're done for three years, I believe it was a three, three or four year? Can't remember, three or four years. But they passed theirs. And Three Lakes, last time went, I believe it was a six-year referendum. Five-year referendum, Three Lakes is a five-year, so they're still two years out for their next referendum. What's the anticipated dollar amount? You saw the chart with the shortfall, that's something the board is going to have to discuss. Before I allow you to ask some questions, I do want to share one more thing with you. And that is, every day is a scary day when stuff comes out of Madison. You never know what they're going to come up with next. And as of about a week ago, there's a proposal out there which I strongly and we should all strongly oppose. There's a proposal by Senator Strobel from Saukville, and a co-author would be Mike Ishara of Oshkosh. They're proposing, school districts can only go to a referendum with a general election, no primaries. Right now, we also have the option to go to a referendum whatever day we want. So if we want to go on June 10, we can do our own referendum. Okay, this proposal would only allow a school district to go to a referendum in November and April. That's it. That's bad enough, right? There's one more piece to this. If your referendum fails, you can't go back for a referendum for two years. This would be devastating to the Northwoods. Devastating. And I looked up Saukville, Sauk Prairie, guess how many operational referendums they've had in their history? Zero, none. And Oshkosh has it, they've had one or two. Okay, but these are the people making laws for Northern, not just for Northern Wisconsin, any property-rich district, but declining enrollment. Not just Northern Wisconsin, property-rich, declining enrollment, you will have to go to a referendum. You have no choice, the way the system is set up. This would be devastating for those districts. So, keep your ears open to this bill, and we are going to do everything, if this hits the floor, we are going to do everything to fight this bill. And then you can't, you have to pass a resolution 73 days prior to your referendum. So people already said, "Well, if this fails in February, would you come back in April?" The answer is no, we can't. There's not enough days in there to pass a resolution, okay? If this failed in February, if this law passed, if this were law now, we couldn't come back for two more years. You saw the shortfall. We're $4 million, $8 million in those two years. So, I don't know how much momentum this bill's going to have, but we're going to definitely try to fight it just as we can. Questions on the presentation? Ken?
I've got a question for the audience. I'd like to know, how many of you are not district employees? Can you raise your hand? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Thank you.
Any questions regarding the numbers?
I've got a question based on the, let's just say, the number that you had that was the projected shortfall average for those three years. That was the number that we passed. How would we change that?
Well, I don't think we would, we wouldn't go, I'm probably sticking to the board, but past history, we wouldn't ask for the 4.3, it'd be a lower dollar amount. So, Margot, what's the best estimate? At $3 million or $2? What?
Well, if we went from a $19 million tax levy, and your question, if we had no referendum?
No, if we passed a referendum for, it would be the difference between 2.7 and what, let's just say we go for 3.9. So now you're talking about 1.3 more. So what would 1.3 million be?
I think it would probably go up to about 7 and 1/4.
Still fairly low, but a big jump for our district. It's a good question.
You know, that's going to be the number one question, that people that aren't involved with the district, that have no vested interest in the district, that's the question that they're going to ask.
So that would be about $1.30 roughly, somewhere in there. And so it'll be interesting to see all the other referendums across the state, there'll be a ton of them, what their increase in the mill rate's going to be. And I can promise you, it's going to be that much or more, and more in most cases, it's going to be more. I don't, it'd be easier to find out with Rylander's, because all their stuff is public already, it's on their website. We can find out what that would mean to their referendum. It's going to be more than $1.30 or whatever. Good question.
And that is a good question. And I should have that prepared the next time we do this.
And that's, but that's-
Put that into that revenue limit worksheet and get that number.
And that's what we do for our public presentations in January. We talk specifically about the impact of a $200,000 house or $300,000 house, what the tax rate will increase for you as a family, what that will mean, what happens if it fails, what are we going to do? So we get into all of those different types of questions and slides for the presentation. The referendum February 16, we'll do three public presentations. Those will be done in January, thinking probably 6:30 at night, and on three different nights in different weeks, at least over two weeks. in different weeks, at least over two weeks. Probably looking at a Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday evening, 6:30. One in Saint Germain, one in Land O' Lakes, one in Eagle River. But we are always open, and we welcome the opportunity to address any other group that would like to have us, that they want to hear both the referendum or if they want to do a presentation. We are more than happy to do more than those three. Other questions? If you do think of questions, feel free to email me or email Margot, we'll be happy to get you an answer. Thanks for becoming informed, greatly appreciated, and have a-